Ready to go, Jennifer? All right. Yep. Yep, there we go. Okay. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to a special meeting of the Edina City Council. It's one that we've done once a year the past few years with regard to proposed street reconstruction projects as we go through this process of kind of resetting our town for the next 60, 80 years. You know, we've been going through our street reconstruction process with respect to streets that are at their end of their useful life. So we're going to hear from our staff tonight. We're going to hear from folks that could be impacted financially by this, these proposed projects or otherwise, that just want to testify regarding this matter. And before we call the meeting to order, I want to just follow up on what Director Bennerott had to say. And that is that there may be people watching on cable TV or at edinamn.gov live meetings or at facebook.com. And tonight you'll have two opportunities to call in, and one is to testify at these two public hearings that we have. And we'll take your testimony there. And I think you'll also come to find out that we're going to keep these public hearings open until about another week or so before we close it up, and then we'll discuss these matters at our subsequent city council meeting. And then also, if you want to call in and talk to us about anything else that's of concern to you in community comment, you can call in and talk to us. But if you want to talk about one of the two public hearing matters, wait till the public hearing matters come up. Otherwise, you can speak to us about anything that's on your mind that's not scheduled for a future public hearing, or as I said, on the agenda this evening, which would include really primarily the two public hearing matters that we're going to hear with regard to proposed street reconstruction projects. So having provided that information, I advise folks, it is Monday, December 11, 2023. It is 6:03 PM in the city of Edina, and we are going to call the meeting to order. I'm going to ask our Clerk Sharon Ellison to call the roll.
Councilmember Agnew?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Rissar?
Here.
Mayor Hoppin?
Here.
Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. It's been published to the general public as well. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
So moved. Second?
Member Jackson moves. Member Agnew seconds the adoption of the meeting agenda for this special meeting on December 11, 2023, as published. Any further discussion, all those in favor of adoption of the meeting agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Now, we are at community comment. Let's get that phone number up on the screen for anybody that wishes to call in on a matter of concern to them that's not on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing. For those folks that might be calling in, I'm going to ask you to stand by because we're going to first go to people in the audience and see if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on a matter that's of concern to them, not on the agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. So let's turn now to the audience. And is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them that's not on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing? Okay, let's turn to the virtual world, and we'll find out the level of enthusiasm or disappointment of our communications director. She likes when people call in.
Yeah, I'm a little lonely over here. There is a slight delay in the broadcast, so I would recommend we wait one minute before moving on. My clock shows that it's 6:04, so I'll come back to you at 6:05 or when I have a caller, whichever is first.
Very good. Thank you. So while we're waiting to see if anybody calls in, just a reminder, this is also a follow-up on what Director Bennerott had to say, and some of the folks, I think, have just been able to get here. So we've got two public hearing matters this evening, and our staff, our engineering department folks, will kick these individual matters off and give a presentation. And when we're done with their presentations and we're done asking questions of them from council at a staff level, we'll open up the public hearing portion of the agenda. Director Bennerott, anything?
No.
All right, very good. Let's move on then from community comment. I think Manager Neil, you have some community comment you wanted to follow up on from a prior meeting, but you're going to do that, I think, this coming Tuesday night, which is our last city council meeting of the year.
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Now we are onto the public hearing portion of the agenda, and the first project that we're going to talk about is the proposed reconstruction project for what's called the Concord B&amp;C Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Project. And Charlie Girk, the principal engineer, is going to kick off that roadway reconstruction presentation. So Mr. Girk, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to start with a little introduction just to street recon to begin with, and then we'll move on to some comments from transportation planner Andrew Scipione, and then we'll move into the public hearing if that's all right.
I think that backgrounding is a good idea for folks.
Check, check. All right, perfect. Mayor, council, residents that made it out here tonight, my name's Charlie Girk. I'm a principal engineer with the city of Edina. I've been here for about 10 years. With me tonight presenting, I have Erin Ditzler, our Assistant City Engineer. I have Andrew Scipione, our transportation planner, and we also have Chad Milner here ready to answer questions if needed. Quick look at our agenda.
You might want to tell folks who Mr. Milner is.
Chad Milner is our Director of Engineering.
All right, very good.
Looking at our agenda for tonight, a thank you to the residents that made it out tonight. We value your input. We want to hear from you. We want to hear from you sooner than later. We don't, when we're designing things and we're constructing things, that's the wrong time to be hearing from you. So we do appreciate you being here tonight, and we'd like to thank the council for being here tonight and additional staff for being here. We're going to quickly talk about briefly infrastructure spending in Edina in general. Compared to years past, we used to kind of give a duplicate presentation. We've decided to pull out some of that duplicate information that is relevant to both projects, and we're going to go through that before we go into the individual presentations in the interest of time. We're going to have Andrew talk about some multimodal information and trying to connect the pieces of the puzzle for our bicycle plan, our pedestrian plans, trails, sidewalks, et cetera. Then we'll move into the Concord B&amp;C Neighborhood, and then after that, we'll move into the Southdale B Neighborhood. On the right here, we have an image taken this fall from Lake Road. Two years ago, we stood in front of you asking for funding and to reconstruct Lake Road. It was an ambitious project with the roundabout and the improvements to the pedestrian facilities. And it's just nice to see a project come, a big project with grand ideas come to life. And there it is. If you haven't had the opportunity to go see it, I would recommend that. Moving into the infrastructure spending, Public Works Engineering, we spend a lot of the tax dollars. We ask for a lot of money. We budget for a lot of money. Looking at our budget work plan, pillar item number one, a strong foundation. So infrastructure meets the needs of the community now and in the future. So we look at our multiple multimodal transportation network. We think about our roads, our sidewalks, bicycle facilities and mass transit facilities, and how those integrate into our community. We think about clean and safe drinking water. I am a millennial. I grew up on the game Oregon Trail, used to die of dysentery. We don't die of dysentery anymore because we have clean and safe drinking water. That's because we have wells, we have treatment plants, and we have a really sophisticated distribution network for that water. On the backside of that, after we use the water, we make gray and brown water. We then have a sanitary sewer network that gets that water out of our community and properly treated and then put back in the environment safely. And then finally, we look at flood protection. We look at our storm sewer, our lakes, our ponds. We look at protecting our community from rain and from the kind of the events that we've created ourselves by developing our community. When I think infrastructure, I think two things, because I'm an engineer and I work for a city, I think roads and utilities. Engineers love to make indexes or comparisons or to analyze things. And so, of course, engineers have created what we call the pavement condition index or the PCI. You'll hear that term a couple times tonight. A PCI of zero means the roads gravel or failed. PCI of 100 is a brand-new road. We tried this drive for about an 80 PCI citywide. If we look at the chart here, 12 years ago, we came to you and we said we need more money for roads, whether it's a street recon or it's milling overlay or seal coating. And you said, yes, here's more money. And this is the outcome of that. We took our PCI from 51 about 12 years ago and almost that goal of 80. We have to keep on spending that money to maintain our infrastructure, so we spend less money now so we don't spend more money in the future. Looking at the PCI again, we spend the money wisely earlier, and we recondition and rehabilitate our pavement before it starts to fail. We spend less money in the long run, and that's just kind of illustrated by this graphic Thinking about the other part of infrastructure, which is our utility infrastructure, we have wells that go to a treatment plant, that go to pipes that go up into a water tower that then make it so everyone in the morning can flush their toilet, get a fresh cup of coffee at home, and not die of dysentery, right? We then have a sanitary sewer network. We have hundreds of miles, 100 and some miles of sanitary sewer that takes that dirty water away and provides it to be able to be cleaned and put back in the environment. We look at our storm network. It's not only storm sewer. We have the storm sewer itself, but then we have lakes and ponds, some man-built, some built by nature itself. It's important that we capture that storm water and we put it in places that we know it's safe and doesn't affect the residents of our community. Moving into next year's projects, we have two project areas that we're proposing to reconstruct next year. This is a full reconstruction. We're ripping out the pavement. We're ripping out the curb and gutter. We're changing the corridor as a whole. Next year's projects include Concord B&amp;C. It's sandwiched between 62 and Valley View Road, just kind of south of Snuffy's. It's primarily local streets, primarily single-family home. There is some multifamily home on the northeast side, but not a lot. The other project area that we're proposing to reconstruct is Southdale B. It is local streets. It feels like it's not local streets when you're out there because of how wide they are and you're in a more commercial district, but I assure you that the ADTs make them local streets, and there's approximately 326 property owners out there. That area is just east of the hospital, north of Southdale Mall, kind of if you're familiar with the colony of Edina, it's that neighborhood. We have a couple of future projects that are proposed by us in Mindot. As the council is well aware, we're proposing to replace the Crosstown Pedestrian Bridge in 2025. That's directly adjacent to the Concord B&amp;C Neighborhood. And with that, Mindot is also looking at making that auxiliary lane permanent on the north side of 62 westbound and adding a noise wall, and that's in 2728 is when that's planned Here's a question that we get. You've probably gotten and you will continue to get, why my street? Why are we reconstructing these streets that we're here to talk about tonight? The first bullet point here, I'm going to focus a lot of the time on this slide, proactive pavement management. We used to wait till we got phone calls about potholes, and we used to wait for the roads to fall apart. That was a really poor management program for our pavement management, because pavement can be extended in life if we take care of it before it fails. So we enacted a proactive pavement management program about 20 years ago, and that has helped increase that PCI number that we've talked about, and it's going to help maintain that number be higher. We look at how we group these neighborhoods together. We thought about how do we implement a citywide pavement management program, and one of the ways was to maximize economies of scale by grouping neighborhoods of like age and quality together. We're not going to reconstruct a block on the northwest side of town and then reconstruct two blocks in the southwest side of town and skip blocks. That's not efficient for our tax dollars. That doesn't produce a good long-term outcome. It really creates problematic lifecycle maintenance for these streets that we're reconstructing. So we put the neighborhoods together. We have, for example, Concord B&amp;C, but there's also an AND. And then, how do we prioritize? Truth be told, it's primarily based on pavement condition. Pavement condition is one of the bigger drivers of how we decide what we're going to reconstruct. We look at the original age of construction. Some pavements have been rehabilitated, and they can't be rehabilitated anymore because they've gone into a complete failure state. But we also look at underground utility issues. We know for a fact there's some issues with older cast iron pipes for water main. We're not going to leave old deteriorated pipes in the ground, do some sort of pavement rehabilitation, just to come rip up all the pavement and replace the water main in five years. That's a poor use of tax dollars and of the fund dollars. And we also look at transportation issues. Granted, a lot of our transportation issues, whether it's a bike route or a pedestrian route, can be addressed without a full recon. We do look at those issues, and it does factor into our decision-making. On the right, we do have the long-term planning for the next five years typically. These are street reconstruction projects, full reconstruction. We rip out all the pavement, the curb and gutter, and we make everything new. Moving into some of the overlap that in years past would have been in both presentations, we're just going to try and present that now in one presentation so we can focus on some of the more important decisions that we're making tonight. Looking at the promote, looking at the proposed water main improvements, we're going to be looking at the hydrants that are in these neighborhoods, their existing spacing if they meet current codes, and if they don't, we're going to add hydrants. If the hydrants are old or they don't meet our current police or our current fire standards, we're going to replace them as well. We're going to replace gate valves project-wide, regardless of their age unless they're 10 years or less old. Gate valves are critical to our water main network. If they don't function, we can't isolate an area of our city where we may have a water main break or a water issue. So it's critical that while we're digging up, we're removing the streets, we dig up these old gate valves and replace them. If we have aged pipe or pipe that's deteriorated, we're going to replace that when needed, and that's all paid for out of the water main fund. Looking at the proposed sanitary sewer improvements, we don't have a lot of catastrophic failures with sanitary sewer. When it is catastrophic, it's typically an immediate need to replace, and that's not a long-term project for us. But we do a lot of pipelining, and there's two reasons for that. One, we basically can non-invasively inflate a concrete balloon from one manhole to another so we don't have to dig up the street, and we can install essentially new water main by inflating this concrete balloon and carrying it in place. So we get a new pipe out of the deal, and then we stop what we call INI or Influent Infiltration. In this case, infiltration meaning water is getting into our pipes because they're old and deteriorated. That clean water then gets sent to the Met Council sanitation station and gets cleaned again, and we're paying for it. So an initiative from the Met Council and an initiative that the city's been working on for decades now is removing influent infiltration. We're going to replace manhole castings and rings when needed, and that's all paid for under the sanitary sewer fund. Proposed storm sewer improvements. Looking at our storm sewer system as a whole, the city does have a comprehensive storm water management plan, and I'm thinking the council's pretty aware of that. When we're reconstructing neighborhoods, we look to our partners at Bar Engineering about what kind of flooding issues we may have in a neighborhood, and we come up with new solutions on minimizing or reducing those impacts. We're going to improve roadway drainage, and we're going to add capacity where it's possible. We're going to replace the curb and gutter. The curb and gutter is paid for out of the storm sewer fund. Both these neighborhoods have a majority of concrete streets, so the curb and gutter is going to defaultly get removed when you remove the concrete streets. We're going to install sump drain where feasible and where practical. Sump drain is a utility that we add for residents to be able to direct their private nuisance drainage to. So if you have a sump that's constantly running, or you have maybe some drainage that is running into your backyard and stagnant, we allow residents to discharge their drainage into the system to prevent that nuisance from occurring. And that's all paid for out of the storm sewer fund. All right, right-of-way impacts. The city, our engineering department, we are terrible neighbors during construction. We rip up the road. We rip out curb and gutter. We're digging up people's front yards, which is actually the right-of-way, but it's their front yard because they're taking care of it. We're replacing water services, so we're quite impactful. Prior to all that, the summer before, we've done a topographical survey, and we've sent out staff to go photograph things that are in the right-of-way, whether it's plantings, special trees, out walks. We look for irrigation systems. We look for pet fences. We document all that. We put in our plan set that this property has these things. We're going to replace them. Sometimes it's not as timely as we would like, but we do, at the end of the day, repair everything that we damaged to like kind. This year is a different, is different than years past. Because of the last three years, we've had such problems with germination of seed, we are proposing sod in these two neighborhoods. Residents in the neighborhoods that do not want sod and would prefer more natural seed or more, more natural look to their lawn, we can work individually with each of those property owners to make sure that they get the lawn that they want, and we're not forcing sod on them. Looking at both the project schedules, over the last two years, we've been communicating via postcards that link to videos that the city's put together over numerous years here, kind of depicting street reconstruction as a whole and then specifically to each neighborhood. In October of this year, we met with the ETC to review some of the more specifics to their commission and what they're looking for. We had a neighborhood meeting at Public Works on November 28th where we had a Q&amp;A with residents. We're here tonight on December 11th for the public hearing. We're hoping that the public hearing closes on the 13th, and you make a decision on the 19th. After we get a decision from the council and a firm direction, we'll start design immediately. We'll prepare bid documents and plans by the end of February and go out for bid in March and April, and hopefully start in the spring of next year, complete construction by the fall, and then we'll be back one year after construction completes to do those final assessments. So on that note of final assessments, part of this project, each of these projects will be funded directly by the adjacent property owners. There's a value that's going to be assigned to the adjoining property owners from the assessment itself, from the work being done. Council may recall that we did study how to fund the street reconstruction, and in 2021, we did make a change to the policy where we would taper the cost of construction over 16 years from fully being funded by assessments to fully being funded by taxes. Currently, as of 2024, street reconstruction projects, residents will be responsible for covering 63.12% of the roadway costs. All right, what are the roadway costs, though? Anything your car's driving on besides the curb and gutter? That's a roadway cost, so the pavement, the removal of the old pavement, the removal of driveways, replacement of driveways, new pavement, the base material, all that lawn that we're replacing and repairing, irrigation systems, things that are directly benefiting to an individual property owner that aren't a utility are assessed. The remainder of those roadway costs, so the 37th percent remaining, will be paid for out of property taxes. Edina does assessments a little bit different. Each community has its own way of determining what's fair and equitable. Years ago, we used to do it by the lineal foot of curb that you had on your, on your street frontage. Sometimes that didn't seem fair, sometimes it did. Currently, we go by what we call an REU, residential equivalent unit. It's a fancy word for a single-family home. If you have a single-family home, you're going to get a factor of one, meaning if our assessment's $13,000 per REU, you're going to get an assessment of $13,000. There are some caveats to that policy. If you live on a corner and half your, half the roads are being reconstructed and half the marked, you're going to get a half an REU because it's a .5 factor. When it comes to multifamily, which Concord, not Concord, but Southdale B has quite a bit of, that factor gets cut down depending on the type of multifamily you are. The bulk of Southdale is apartment and condos, so their residential equivalent unit is .5. And then there's various different methodology that we use for commercial and office products, but there's not a lot of the, in those, a lot of that in these neighborhoods. We also do what we call a market benefit estimate. So the special assessment that we're assessing is valid if the assessment does not exceed the special benefit measured by the increase in market value due to the improvement. In layman's terms, that means if we were providing more value to a licensed appraiser in their opinion with the reconstructed project than you had before, and the assessment's equal to or less than that, the assessment is valid by state statute. We do hire a licensed and qualified appraisal firm to do these market benefit estimates each year, and we'll go into more depth for each project on those. Last slide, finally, the less fun part for everyone in this room, probably. The final assessment amount will be assessed one year after the project's complete. Some cities do it a little different. We found that this is the most equitable and fair because it accounts for all the costs, as opposed to us assuming what cost would be. So we wait a year after the project is complete to levy that assessment. Residents have few options for paying those assessments. They can either pay the full assessment upon receiving the bill to avoid any future interest charges. They can pay a minimum of 25% down, and then the balance can roll to their property taxes over 15 years, and then they pay interest on the remainder. We don't allow less than 25%. I'm sure it's clerical in nature. You don't want someone paying 1%, 2%, so that's why the policy exists there. You can roll your entire amount into the property taxes over 15 years and pay interest, or if you meet special income requirements and you're over the age of 65, you can defer it. I would refer anyone that has those questions to our assessing department to see if they could qualify. Last year, the interest rates were, it's 1% over the market rate. Our market rate last year was 2.72%, so interest would be 3.72%, which seems a little, little advantageous at this point with the way the economy is, so. All right. I'm going to hand the presentation off to Andrew Scipione, our transportation planner, and he's going to give some information on our transportation goals.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, Mayor, members of council, for the opportunity to speak tonight. Before my colleagues go into specifics about these projects, I wanted to provide a refresher on our strategic transportation objectives, oh, thank you, and how they've shaped these projects. To start with, the transportation chapter of our comprehensive plan includes 14 goals which focus on developing a multimodal transportation system that is accessible to all users. More specific goals in that plan include improving mobility with a balanced system of options, reducing overall use of single occupancy vehicles, encouraging and supporting transit service and connections, and managing safety of all users and modes. Through our Living Streets Plan, we strive to design our roadways to meet the needs of our most vulnerable users, including pedestrians and cyclists. We seek to achieve this by prioritizing non-motorized connections and by repurposing rights of way for pedestrians, cyclists, and transit users. We believe that taking these steps improves quality of life and reduces the environmental impacts of our transportation system. The guiding principles of our pedestrian and bicycle master plan include improving user safety and comfort, addressing network gaps, designing for all ages and abilities, and connectivity for everyday uses and needs. The backbone of this plan is what we call the twin loops, which is intended to be a network of high-comfort shared-use paths that connect all four quadrants of the city and connect to local and regional amenities, including schools and parks. Something to keep in mind later tonight is that the inner loop of this system is proposed to go through the Concord neighborhood, which is proposed for reconstruction. Our recently adopted climate action plan also talks at length about transportation, given that it is the second-highest generator of greenhouse gas emissions. In order to reduce emissions, the plan recommends reducing vehicle miles traveled and increasing transit ridership by 2030. Some of the ways we can achieve these objectives is to provide more opportunities for active transportation, that's walking, rolling, or biking, providing more multimodal connections to everyday uses like schools, recreational areas, and commercial districts, and encouraging and supporting transit service and connections. There are a number of new pedestrian and bicycle facilities within these two projects that we'll get into more detail later tonight. These include a new sidewalk on Wooddale Avenue, a shared-use path on 64th Street and Concord Avenue, and sidewalks on Heritage Drive, Berry Road, and 65th Street. As you consider these facilities, please note that staff has thoroughly considered how these improvements are supported by these guiding documents, as well as our four budget pillars. If we're serious about achieving many of these strategic transportation and climate action objectives, then these are the types of actions that we need to take. Thank you for your time, and I will turn it over to Assistant City Engineer Erin Ditzler, who will provide more details about these projects.
Thank you, Mr. Scipione.
Thank you, Andrew, for highlighting some of our big-picture goals as we transition into the, some of the specifics of our first project tonight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ditzler.
As Andrew mentioned, my name is Erin Ditzler, Assistant City Engineer. Turn the laser pointer on here. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and residents, thank you for the opportunity to present the proposed roadway reconstruction improvements for the Concord B&amp;C Neighborhood. Concord B&amp;C is bordered on the north by Valley View Road on the north, Garrison Lane cul-de-sac on the east, West 64th Street on the south, adjacent to Highway 62, and Concord Avenue on the west. There's 166 properties in Concord B&amp;C, 2.2 miles of road, and over 28,000 square yards of street pavement. Existing roadway conditions, most of the streets were constructed originally in the 1950s, although Rose Court was constructed in 1992. West 64th Street also had some pavement improvements associated with the sanitary sewer main project in the 90s. Existing street widths vary between 20 and 30 feet wide. Most of the streets are 30 feet today, and the soils are primarily clay with some silty sandy soils.
Is Rose Court concrete or asphalt?
That's an asphalt street. That's an asphalt street. The over 50% of the roadway pavements are concrete. The remainder are asphalt pavement. The citywide average pavement condition index rating is 78. Concord B and C neighborhood overall average is 36. Street widths for proposed roadway improvements, they'll vary throughout the project area. Most will be 27 feet wide when, when measuring from the face of curb to the face of curb. Most of the streets will have no change to existing parking. There will be exceptions, however, which we'll touch on in a few slides. Let's start looking at typical sections of local streets. Most of the project area streets, as shown in green, we're proposing a 27-foot wide road with parking on both sides. That's narrowing of three feet compared to the existing roads in green. Typically, we narrow one and a half feet on each side of the road. There are exceptions to that on a case-by-case basis. The 27-foot wide roadway width is our city standard for local streets without a pedestrian improvement associated with them. Next, Virginia Lane, as shown in the, the green block here. This road's proposed to be 20 feet wide. The existing roadway is 20 feet wide as well. However, we are proposed to sign Virginia Lane as no parking on both sides due to the narrow roadway width. The remainder of the streets in the project area will have a proposed sidewalk or shared use path associated with them. Before we go over those proposed facilities, let's look at the existing pedestrian and bicycle facilities. Wooddale Avenue Extended, there's a shared use path between West 64th Street and Nancy Lane. There's no other sidewalks in the project area. However, just outside the project area, on Valley View Road, there are sidewalks. There's also sidewalks north of Valley View Road on Wooddale Avenue, primarily on the east side, and there's a sidewalk on Concord Avenue north of Valley View Road on the west side. There's also an existing pedestrian-activated flasher at Valley View Road and Concord Avenue. There's an existing bike boulevard in Wooddale Avenue between Nancy Lane and Valley View Road. The bike boulevard is where bicycles share the road with vehicles. There's also bike lanes adjacent to the project area on Valley View Road. There's a buffered bike lane. There's also a bike boulevard on Wooddale Avenue north of Valley View Road. We'll also mention the Roslin Park Pedestrian Bridge is just south of the project area over Highway 62. Let's review briefly the pedestrian and bicycle master plan. The master plan showed a proposed sidewalk on Concord Avenue, as shown with the red dashed line, and a shared use path on Wooddale Avenue between Nancy Lane and Valley View Road. As Andrew mentioned, the twin loops network has an outer loop, as shown in yellow, and the inner loop, as shown in orange. The twin loops network, of course, has a, has a corridor through the Concord B and C neighborhood, so the Ped and Bike Master Plan does support a shared use path through the Concord B and C neighborhood between West 64th Street and Valley View Road. Great plan on paper. However, there are some concerns and constraints on Wooddale Avenue. We are uncertain if we can get a shared use path eight feet wide on Wooddale Avenue between Nancy Lane and Garrison Lane today. That is due to narrow existing street width of only 20 feet wide between Nancy and Garrison Lane, also the lack of available right-of-way, only 30 feet wide, as well as potential impacts to trees, wetland, water body, and other potential infrastructure impacts. Proposed pedestrian and bicycle facilities, due to the constraints on Wooddale Avenue, we are proposing a six-foot wide concrete walk on Wooddale Avenue between Nancy Lane and Valley View Road. Please note, we do have a range showing here of six to eight feet. If the council proceeds with the project at the next meeting, and during the design phase, we gain more confidence in our ability to get an eight-foot wide shares, shared use path on Wooddale Avenue, we would propose to do so. But for now, because of the constraints, we're going to propose for this meeting a six-foot concrete walk. But for this slide and a handful of future slides, you're going to see the range of six to eight feet. Because of that, those constraints on Wooddale Avenue and the lack of a shared use path, we are proposing an eight-foot wide asphalt shared use path on 64th Street, as shown in green, and Concord Avenue. We're also proposing a new pedestrian-activated rapid flashing beacon at Valley View Road and Concord Avenue. We're also proposing the bike boulevard on Wooddale Avenue between Nancy Lane and Valley View Road. Therefore, on Valley View, or excuse me, Wooddale Avenue, we would have pedestrians utilizing the shared use path and an off-street pedestrian facility, and bicycles, bicycles could use the shared use path and the on-street bike boulevard on Wooddale Avenue. Maintenance would be by the residents for these sidewalk and shared use path facilities as per our current policy. Touching again on the goals for the eight-foot wide shared use path, again, to support the twin loops network, shown in more detail here, the outer twin loop network gains access to Pamela Park, and then the eight-foot shared use path assures a, both the pedestrian and bicycle shared use option. On the inner loop, through the Concord B and C neighborhood, to amenities like on the south, Roslin Park, and the Aquatic Center, as well as north through the inner loop through the project area, to amenities like Concord Elementary and Southview Middle Schools. Let's review some of the detailed proposed typical sections, starting with Wooddale Avenue. Shown in green between West 64th Street and Nancy Lane, we've got an existing 10-foot wide asphalt shared use path. That will stay in place. Next up, typical section proposed for Wooddale Avenue between Nancy Lane and Garrison Lane, as shown in green. Again, because of the constraints on Wooddale Avenue, primarily the 20-foot existing roadway width, we are proposing a 15-foot wide road, no parking on either side, six-foot concrete walk, and a bike boulevard sharing the road with vehicles. If you combine the 15-foot roadway width with the new concrete curb and gutter and the six-foot concrete sidewalk, that's a two-foot increase when comparing to the existing 20-foot wide road. The next typical section, Wooddale Avenue between Garrison Lane and Valley View Road, as shown in green, we're proposing a 24-foot wide road, no parking on either side, a 68-foot sidewalk, and the bike boulevard. The 24-foot roadway width is the city standard roadway width for local streets with a pedestrian facility associated with it. Graphical example of the bike boulevard, boulevard option, it's essentially vehicles sharing the road with bicycles. Vehicles required to give a three-foot clearance when passing a bicyclist. Our city standard also includes signing to denote the bike boulevard as well as pavement markings on the road, pavement striping denoting the bike boulevard. Next up, West 64th Street between Wooddale Avenue and St. John's Avenue, as shown in green. This section's proposed to be a 20-foot wide road, no parking on either side, an eight-foot asphalt shared use path on the north side. Combining the roadway and eight-foot shared use path, that would be a four-foot increase compared to the existing street on these two blocks. Next up, West 64th Street between St. John's Avenue and Concord Avenue. We do have a narrow right-of-way in this section. Therefore, we are proposing a 15-foot wide roadway, one-way, westbound, no parking on either side, and an eight-foot shared use path on the north. If we combine the roadway width, the curb on each side, and the eight-foot shared use path, you get 24 feet wide, which matches the existing roadway width for these two blocks. We have received some comments so far from residents in the public hearing process requesting that the shared use path be moved from the north side to the south side. That is something that could be achieved. We did put, propose the asphalt shared use path on the north side to provide a little bit more of a buffer for properties on the north side, providing a buffer for vehicles between the homes and the roadway. That was the primary reason there, but it is achievable to put that shared use path on the south side. Our last typical section is Concord Avenue, as shown in green. This typical section shows a 24-foot wide road, an eight-foot asphalt shared use path on the west, no parking on the east side, parking on only the west side. That parking lane would provide a buffer between the vehicles and the travel lane and the pedestrian and bicyclists on the shared use path. Again, the 24-foot wide road is the city standard for local streets with a pedestrian facility associated with it. Again, just to emphasize, our twin loops network and Ped and Bike Master Plan supporting a off-street pedestrian and bicycle shared use path from 64th up Concord Avenue. Transitioning to the estimated project costs and the funding sources, our estimated project cost is $12.9 million. That includes construction contingency, engineering, clerical, and finance costs. A portion of the roadway improvements will be funded by special assessments. The remainder of the $12.9 million estimated project cost will be funded by property taxes for a portion of the roadway improvements, city utility funds for the utility improvements, and the pedestrian cyclist safety or PACS fund for sidewalk and shared use path improvements. Let's take a look at the estimated roadway assessments. Again, there's 166 properties for Concord B and C. As Charlie mentioned, single-family homes are assessed one residential equivalent unit. That's regardless of the lot size or the street front footage. Those properties are shown in blue. Corner properties with one side street outside the project area are assessed 0.5 REUs. Those properties are shown in yellow. There are a handful of green-colored lots. Those are city-owned lots associated with lakes and ponds. Because those lots are not developable, those properties are proposed to be assessed 0 REUs. We've got one purple-colored lot, which is an office building, that's proposed to be assessed 6.7 REUs, and the orange-colored lot is a, an apartment building, 15.75 REUs.
Would you back up one slide for just a moment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You sum up all the partial REUs with the full REUs for the project area, you get 174.49 REUs. So calculating the roadway assessment per REU, you take the roadway project costs, you separate out the portion that's going to be funded by property taxes, divide that by the total project REUs, you get $13,400 per REU. This amount is estimated. It won't be final until construction is complete. It does include a construction contingency of 10%, so we do hope this amount goes down following the contractor bidding and construction phase. Just a side note, this project, without the 2021 assessment policy change, the assessment amount would have been $21,200. So quite a change on that one. Charlie led off with the State Statute, Chapter 429, and the assessment benefit test. We did hire a licensed and qualified appraisal firm. They prepared a report that said properties could see an average price benefit of $15,000 to $20,000 per buildable lot. And recall from our previous slide, the preliminary assessment is $13,400 per REU, which is less than the preliminary market benefit estimate range. So how does the Concord B and C estimated assessment amount compare to the last two years' projects? Concord B and C is more, $13,400 per REU compared to Morningside C, $11,500, Morningside D and E, $9,300. Let's take a moment to talk about why that is. Again, the estimated assessment per REU is calculated by the roadway project cost divided by the total number of REUs. If you substitute square yards of paving for the roadway project costs, since the roadway area is the primary driver of the roadway project costs, you divide that square yards of paving by the total number of REUs, we get some comparison values. Concord B and C, 175.2 square yards of paving per REU, Morningside C, 144.8, and Morningside D and E, 112.6. So the higher the square yards of paving per REU, generally the higher assessment. Another way to look at this, Morningside C and Morningside D and E, on average, has a little bit higher average neighborhood front footage density, so it has more REUs in that project area, so the assessments are lower. Likewise, Concord B and C has a little bit comparatively less density of front footage on an average in the neighborhood, so lower number of REUs, higher assessment amount. Likewise, we do have inflation, increasing construction costs each year. Final slide. Reminder, approving pedestrian bicycle improvements requires a minimum of three out of five council votes in favor to pass. In conclusion, staff believes this project is feasible, cost-effective, and necessary to improve the public infrastructure. Therefore, staff recommends the council make a motion to close the public hearing at noon December 13th and to continue action on the item through December 19th, City Council Meeting for Improvement Number BA 465. That concludes the presentation. Thank you for your time, and staff will stand for questions and comments from the mayor and members of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Ditzler. Council members, questions for Mr. Ditzler at this point in time? Member or sir?
When I go online and I Google municipal state aid roads Edina, I get a map from the Department of Transit that indicates Concord, south of Valley View, is a municipal state aid road. Is that true?
Thank you, Member, or sir. It's not true. There, the state aid street for Concord Avenue is north of Valley View. South of Valley View, it is not. The primary reason for that is it is essentially a dead end south at the highway, so it's not a state aid street.
According to the map MnDOT has online, it is a municipal state aid road.
I can confirm it is not. I do have a map. I don't have it with me tonight. I can, I could share, I could follow up with you on that one.
So we can confirm it's not. We designate the roadways.
You can confirm it's not.
So I think the map's wrong. Andrew and I work on the mapping every year, and we submit our state aid routes.
Hmm.
And we believe it's not south of Valley View Road. But is that leading to a different question?
It's leading to another question, though.
Okay.
It's going to be an eight-foot wide road. And if we could go back to the image that shows 64th and the proposed bike path, okay. I don't really understand the idea of putting it on the north side to provide a buffer. However, putting it on the north side raises a lot of safety concerns, and I am familiar with students from Concord, you know, going over to the park, coming through the neighborhood, and, you know, just thinking about who those most vulnerable users could be. And, you know, trying to imagine a kid on a bike going down the west side of Concord and then seeing an eight-foot wide sidewalk on the north side, having to take a sharp turn to cross over Concord, and then having to cross over Ashcroft, St. John's, Miller's Lane, and then cross back over 64th, and also have to, moving in a direction that is perpendicular to four private driveways, have to negotiate whether or not a car is backing out of a driveway. And I just really feel like that is a path that is a very perilous one. And if we were instead to put the sidewalk on the south side, you would have one conflict point rather than nine. And, you know, coming down Concord, you would be viewing going forward, so you would be able to see better whether that was clear or not, and then you'd get across to the other side, and you could pedal without peril. You'd also have a better view of the driveways because you'd be further away from them. So I'm wondering, was safety calculated into the decision to put it on the north side?
Well, as I mentioned, it is achievable on the south side. That was our primary reason. I think, as you factor in driveways, that we've got numerous miles of sidewalk in the city that do cross driveways. I'm not aware of any vehicle and pedestrian access in my history with the city on those, but you do make some valid points about the crossings of the roadways, certainly, so we could definitely factor that in.
And finally, the last question. Have we ever put an eight-foot wide sidewalk on a road adjacent to a road that was not a municipal state aid road, requiring residents to keep that clear? And if so, could you provide an example of that?
I think, unless Andrew knows right offhand...
The only example I can think of doesn't fully meet your criteria, but on Minnehaha Boulevard, adjacent to Arden Park, that sidewalk that we built in 2016, I believe, that's an eight-foot wide shared-use path. But I believe we maintain the entirety of it because it is adjacent to a park.
And then we have many examples of six-foot wide sidewalks that are in the back of curb that people need to maintain, because we always want an extra foot buffer instead of just a five-foot sidewalk. Many instances of six-foot sidewalks throughout town where people have to maintain. When we do have people maintain them, we just want the five-foot through space. They don't have to maintain the full eight feet. We're looking for a five-foot minimum requirement.
Thank you.
Why don't you also explain what the criteria are for having a road designated as a state aid roadway?
Yeah, we have an opportunity. There's gas tax and tab fees that are collected by the state, and each city, over 5,000 population, can designate 20% of their roadway network to be on the municipal state aid system. And then when we reconstruct that system, we get money from the gas tax to help support reconstruction and maintenance. The funds are definitely lower than what we need to do full reconstruction, but it's a nice pot of money to use on roads like Valley View Road and Wooddale, north of Valley View Road. And typically, it's the ones with the higher volume traffic, because we don't want our residents paying for the regional traffic on those networks.
My recollection is that you've got a traffic threshold, that you look at vehicles traveled per day on a particular roadway. So Valley View, West 70th Street, some of those busier streets that maybe have 1,000 cars a day or more.
Exactly. We get more funding because we have higher traffic volumes. We want to put the ones with the higher traffic volumes to get more funding to help maintain and reconstruct those streets.
Okay.
More traffic on Concord North, up towards the schools there as well.
Exactly. Yep, that's why that's designated.
You might also, I think, explain in a general way, the special assessment policy deals with the street, but everything that needs to be touched under the street gets paid for out of our utility funds that everybody in town pays into. So while the residents are bearing part of the load under the street for what needs to be improved, the whole town is committed to that endeavor of improving everything under the street, and it's the street itself, then, that becomes subject to the special assessment policy. And then, as we've worked on trying to create this 16-year profile, where we're trying to move progressively towards a situation where we assess it all via the property tax, there's going to be special assessments for each property owner until we get to that point.
Correct. Yeah, if you can see the table that Aaron put together, you know, $8.7 million are utility funds for the sanitary water main and storm sewer. So a very large portion of that $12.8 million is utility funds. And then, like you mentioned, those property taxes, it's starting to cover, I think, 37% of the assessments at this point, based on that transition for our assessment policy. So it's definitely meeting the goals the council set forth of trying to reduce those assessments over time, but being aware of the previous assessments from the last 20-plus years where people have been assessed. So by the time it transitions in 2036, nearly all of our streets will be completely reconstructed, and everybody will have some sort of assessment.
So when you look at this particular chart, the total cost, $3.912,999 million on the roadway, when you go to the column on the left, what you've done there, as I think, is broken it down to what the percentage is that the residents would pay per RU. The 63.12% in the top is the top number, and then the number down below, the 1.574 million, is what's coming out of the general property, general fund, to help pay for that. So every resident is helping pay for that portion of this project?
Correct.
Okay.
If I could add as well, if you recall from the earlier portion of the slide, this project area has a significant amount of clay and silty sand in it. There's going to be a significant amount of subgrade corrections of poor soils replaced, bringing in more stable soils. That amount used to be assessed, it no longer is. So this assessment rate, five years ago, pre-policy change, would even have been much more higher due to those poor soil replacements. So that's no longer an assessed cost.
That's a good point, too, that we went through that exercise and we established that new street reconstruction policy. Other council members have questions? I've got some more with regard to 64th Street, but others may have, yes. Councilmember Agnew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick mathematical question. So when I did the percentages for these two amounts, the amount for the special assessment and the property taxes against that total amount, it's an even, like, pretty close to 60% for special assessment and 40% for property taxes. Is that the number that we saw on the earlier slide? I thought it was closer to, like, 63%. I just don't want to be forecasting potentially different numbers than what the forecast should be.
And there's some rounding in the numbers. We're generalizing, and there's some of the subcuts Aaron just talked about, where it could be more or less by five or 10% based on subcuts, where we'll be paying much more out of property taxes or other funding sources than are specially assessed, because we're not doing, the subcuts aren't being specially assessed now. So these numbers are giving you a baseline. We're going to go out for bids, and the numbers are going to be different. Halfway through construction is going to be different. So until we have that final assessment hearing, that's when those numbers are really locked down. And that's where that percentage of 63.1% is going to be applied directly to the specific items that can be assessed based on our current assessment policy.
Okay. And do we, I mean, similar to how we do, like, the levy, have any requirement that what we, it can never go above what we're estimating it at? Or do we assess the true, true costs?
We assess the true, true costs. Most instances, it has been below, because as Aaron mentioned, there's contingency in there. There has been a few occasions where a few hundred dollars more per RU, maybe 1,000, but we've not been above the number that we publish at this meeting very often.
Thank you, Councilmember Agnew. Other folks? Yes, Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for the benefit of the public, can you kind of talk about the timing between the road construction and the new lane on 62 and the pedestrian bridge? Because I think people are worried when there's multiple phases, that maybe you build a nice new street, and then it gets ripped up by accident with the next phase. So if you could walk through that, please.
Yeah, I can speak to that. I've been working with MINDOT on both those projects. So we want to reconstruct the streets next year, so that's 2024. In 2025, the pedestrian bridge. So we would anticipate a lot of staging on the park side of that for all the, most of the materials. There is going to be some staging, and we'll have them protect the street. And any damage that may occur because of the bridge construction, they're going to have to redo it again. We don't like that, but the timing is there. That one, we're hoping to get built in '25. And then the noise wall in that auxiliary westbound lane is still a maybe. MINDOT still has to go through a lot of different committees, still has to find the funding. It's a small project. They really want to do it, so we're anticipating they're going to find the funding to do it. But that, they've said in '27 or '28. And again, any damage to the street, they're going to be required to address after construction in that standpoint. But with the auxiliary lane, they have the extra lane for space for the retaining wall, the noise wall. They'd have some of that shoulder space. So we would make sure that any damage, because it's a brand-new street, would be in that similar condition after construction.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
If I could, can I piggyback off that, too? Presuming this project moves forward to the design phase, I would propose that we would share our design this winter with MINDOT to look at some of their preliminary drawings to ensure that we can, you know, minimize any damage to this 64th Street with our project and hopefully avoid it altogether in the future with the MINDOT projects.
Yeah, I think the hope is we don't move curbs again. Let's get the curbs where they belong, make room for noise walls, and we're already sharing CAD files and doing that, so I'm pretty confident we'll be all right.
Terrific. Thank you.
Councilmember Pierce?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So just a couple of, maybe one question and a couple of comments. Just to confirm, the ask on the 19th will be a vote to move forward with the design phase?
Correct.
Okay.
And basically, that approves, sorry, that approves the preliminary assessments, and it basically says you support the improvements we presented here tonight. We'll do design, go out for bid, and come back with an award later in the spring.
Yep, nope, that's good. Just wanted to clarify that. And then, and so the follow-up question I have is, and I'll actually use Member Rissler's question on Concord. How do we vet things like that to then confirm what the design will be? So I'm kind of implying that what you're, what we're seeing today, and I'll use the term, is preliminary until we get through design. And so that's, in general, how would we vet things like that by the time we get to a final, final vote to move forward?
Well, the vote to move forward would be next week. So we would say, are you comfortable with, Wooddale's an example, six-to-eight-foot sidewalk?
Yep.
We think it's going to be six. There might be a couple of feet we can gain, but we really think it's six, but we wanted to leave it open to get a little more space for the bikes and pets.
Yep.
There was one other where there was, oh, the potential boulevard on Concord. We don't think there's room for boulevard if we do an eight-foot trail. But if there is, that'd be nice to have a little buffer between there like other streets. So I think when we would know that is when we're going out for bid. We would update the Better Together website to make sure the residents are up to speed, the council's up to speed, and then we can share that with the council during the award portion of the project.
I guess to be maybe just a little bit more specific, and I, it makes sense to me, the way the process works, to say there's a range from six to eight. We're going to go to design, and we'll figure out if it's going to be eight feet, five feet, six feet, whatever. That makes sense to me, because in the deck, you're giving actually a range, and the cost that is in here is the extreme, right? So that's what makes sense. But if there are actually design issues, so, and I'm just using Member Rissler's question, to go from the north side, or from the south side to move it to the north side, if there are legitimate safety concerns, when you start to look at design and we look at the different challenges, how would that actually, because that would be, to me, a completely different, a completely different project?
And I would agree with you, Member Pierce. 64th is different, because we've said right now we could flip it to the south side, and it would, it would work. We can make that fit. So we wanted to hear the comments from council, from the residents tonight, and the comments up to the public hearing on noon on Wednesday. And next Tuesday, we're going to present that and say, yes or no, we can flip that. That's the one I think we'll have an answer next week.
Yeah.
Concord, as a different example, is if there's a tree in the way, we can't get a boulevard there, but for most of it, we could get a three-foot boulevard where people could put plantings in. Those kind of design things will take time for us to do the CAD drawings and figure that out.
But those major questions, when we come into the 19th, those things will be vetted, we'll understand the recommendation that would address those things.
64th Street, yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Oh, and then the other request, I guess, I would make, and I think we did this when we were looking at Blake. It is, it's a little challenging to really understand how these, the pathways kind of transition, just looking at a map. And so it would be good to at least be able to understand how someone might actually traverse the path. And I remember when we were talking about Blake, I asked, I think I was saying, I don't know that we need that wide of a sidewalk. And someone said, well, if you've got two...
Strollers.
Strollers and a person walking, and then someone wants to ride by, right? And so those kinds of conversations, it would be great if we could kind of visualize that as best as we can in council, so that we understand how these pathways would actually be utilized. That would be great as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I think leaving this graphic up is a good thing. First of all, as you proposed redoing this project, are you including Rose Court or eliminating Rose Court?
Rose Court is in the project area.
In the project.
It will be reconstructed.
Okay, even though the roads there were reconstructed not in the '50s, but 1997?
Yep. Otherwise, as Charlie mentioned in his intro slide, Rose Court would be an anomaly off by itself, just less than a block there. If we were to reconstruct that street another 30 years, the assessment, well, there wouldn't be an assessment, I guess, but it would be difficult to keep track of all these one-block streets all over the city. So to do the whole neighborhood and get the volume pricing is our goal.
All right. Understood. I think what we'd like a little bit more detail around, all of us, neighbors too, is your thinking as to why you wouldn't wait to do the streets until after we get the new pedestrian bridge put in? If there's going to be heavy equipment coming in on 64th Street, and you're saying they'll fix any damage, I mean, if I got to assess $13,800 and I'm living either at 6301 64th Street West or along that little stretch, and now the road in front of me that I paid $13,800 is going to need repair, because MINDOT was in there, or we were in there, contractors were in there, and damaged that brand-new road, what's the thinking about why to do the road first and not do the bridge first?
Well, the bridge, we've struggled to get that accomplished. We still don't know if it's going to be '25 yet. We're still trying to get approvals of a layout, and it's still a year approval with MINDOT. It could be '26, you know, '27, but we're shooting for '25. This is part of a proactive pavement maintenance program, and we've been programming this neighborhood for three to four years. We don't want to take it out of the queue, because now we are not ready for other streets next year, and we lose the funding, and we keep going. So the only street that's maybe of concern is 64th. And watching them build the noise wall on 169 and using that frontage road, there was not a lot of damage. They had big, tired vehicles that are easy on the pavement. There were some scuffs and aesthetics, but not a lot of damage. So it's really where these stations are.
And I know the equipment is multi-axle and built to displace weight and all those things, but still, you can see where that might be a worry for people.
Yep.
I mean, it's actually quite a unique opportunity. It's a little bit like thinking about France Avenue, where you've got two developments coming at the same time across the street, or here you have a neighborhood that was in the queue for a street reconstruction, and all of a sudden, we got the opportunity of a new pedestrian bridge. a sudden, we got the opportunity of a new pedestrian bridge out of that neighborhood across to the park, and a sound wall, which they probably thought they'd never get. I didn't think they'd ever get it because of MINDOT's formula on decibels and density. I thought, you know, we wouldn't have much of a chance here. And here we are, in a spot where we can maybe get them to do this. If I were, I would, going to lobby, like you, I would lobby them to do it all the way to where the traffic lights are, where the control lights are on the entrance into 100. You can look, it's like on the drawing, it comes up short of 100 on the ramp. So there's some houses that get left out.
It goes further than that red line. So we just drew a couple of red lines. It goes up, there's a side
If it goes all the way to where Highway 100, it hits Highway 100 on the approach, then I, then that would make me happier.
Yeah, it goes further than what we, yeah, I just drew some lines on it. It goes up, at least halfway up that ramp, if, up to around the bubble on that ramp.
Totally right.
Yeah, up to that.
If it gets to the point where you hit Highway 100, that would be the best.
Yep.
Okay. All right, let's go back to, let's go back to that prior slide and talk a little bit more about 64th. Because I think this is, this is problematic for, you know, I'm trying to understand that. I mean, you want to take a road that's now, when I go, when we've all been down there, I think, to meet with the neighbors. It's 24 feet wide. It's not very wide right now. We used to go standard 27 now. And that's a reduction over what we used to have for city streets. And you want to take it to 15 feet. And I don't know if people park on 64th Street now to go any place, but we'd basically be putting in a path, which is a good, a good thing, I think, whether it's south or north, we can work that out. But the reduction by nine feet on the roadbed to get to 15 feet was, you know, I guess, there's no question, that would slow down traffic because you've got a seven-and-a-half-foot lane on each side.
Well, this is a one-way road.
All the way from Rose Court?
No.
No, it's only a one-way, it's only a one-way from
Half of it.
St. John's to Concord. What I'm talking about is primarily Rose Court to St. John.
Okay, go to that one. So we're making a 20-foot-wide street there.
20-foot wide?
Yep.
Not 14?
Not 15. So that's 20. That's a two-way, 20-foot-wide street.
All right.
And with the low traffic volumes, there's only a few hundred cars, if that, down in this area on both. So we felt like getting that pedestrian network, that opportunity to do the inner loop on 64th on a roadway that doesn't have very many, not much traffic at all would be the benefit.
So if I'm, if I'm on a one-way now from St. John's to Concord, is that going to, what kind of analysis has been done to determine the increased average daily vehicle count on the Concord? Because people, it's a, it's a one-way now. So if you live on the south end of Ashcroft, you may or may not go out the north end of Ashcroft. You might go out on the one-way, and then you've got to go up Concord. Or you're down in Rose Court, and you make a mistake, and you don't turn on St. John, and now you're on a one-way, and you've got to go over to Concord.
It's a good question, Mr. Mayor. So we did a traffic count at, we did a turn count analysis at 64th Street and Ashcroft, which is right in the middle of that proposed one-way section. We looked at it over a period of three days, and the average among those three days, we observed 25 cars that use that segment of 64th Street.
Per day?
Per day. Yep. In the, specifically in the, in the eastbound direction. So if we switch it to a westbound one-way, which is what we're proposing, based on that analysis, we would estimate it's about 25 cars then that would use St. John's instead to go eastbound into that area.
Okay.
So pretty small traffic numbers when we looked at the analysis.
Thanks for that. Glad you did that study. Another couple, a couple other general issues seems like people always ask about, well, you had, you had photos of beautiful landscaping all the way to the curb, and that, you know, that there's right-of-way there. But we didn't talk much about pet containment, and we didn't talk much about irrigation systems. People have those in the right-of-way. We tear them up. What happens? We pay for that, or they pay for that, or how does that work? People will want to know that.
That's included in the project costs. It's no additional cost to those property owners who have landscaping and irrigation system that, that is replaced by the contractor. And we work with each and every property owner. Specifically, there's quite a bit of coordination specifically on things like landscaping, because you might have many different types of plantings and species there. But we'll also work with you on irrigation systems and pet containment fences, do that each and every year.
Typically, pet fences, we do temporary repairs right-of-way because they may still have the animal in the house. Irrigation, we tie off those last few things right at the curb. And then landscaping, they might have a landscaping plan. We said, give us your landscaping plan. We'll match what the plants were that you put in originally, and we'll reestablish that for you. So we just need to work with those owners.
And if you need new driveway aprons, we're putting those in as part of the project.
Going in and everyone. Yep.
Okay. Let's go back to the bridge for a minute. And we've seen your idea of what the bridge plan ought to look like and how you access it for ADA purposes. Is there anything about what you're proposing here that interferes with any other ideas other than your option A, that, you know, we might come up with some other ideas from listening to you and listening to residents? I think it's coming Thursday night, right?
Well, we've had it Better Together open. It's open through today, and then we'll have the meeting on Thursday night. And I'll present next week again all the findings and all the feedback. The touchdown point is the same on all the options. It's right at Wooddale because we want to make sure we connect that point. So people have that option of using Wooddale or potentially 64th here if that's supported by the council. So we don't think it's going to change any of the options that are on the table for the bridge because that, that tie-in point is the same for all those options.
Yep. I suspect it as much because the option you're proposing takes up the most space of any of the options that I've seen. So if that, if that still works, then the other ones will surely work, so.
Exactly. And there's not a lot of space to do anything to the west because now there's a noise wall, auxiliary lane. So kind of all those options we had for the bridge west were always super tight. Now they're even tighter that we know there's a noise wall and auxiliary lane. So those are kind of checked off the list of potentials. And our list is more of everything moving. Anything with the bridge is east.
Okay. That prompted any other questions from council members at this point in time? Yes, Member Regan?
Thank you. I want to go back again to the conversation on 64th, just because I, as looking at the map, there's another street right further west to what we're showing here. So 64th continues, it looks like, for another block. And I'm just trying to come to terms with like what it would be like to now have a one-way for that area. And I think I recall on previous slides, there are streets that we have smaller, I don't know if it's seven-and-a-half, drive lanes. And if there's only 25 cars per day going in that other direction, what would prevent us from continuing to keep the driveline at 15 feet but maintaining the two-way once we eliminate the parking?
We could do that. It's, it's pretty narrow. Sunnyside Road, I think in Country Clubs, at 18 feet wide for two-way with parking even in. So we could do it. It's not a state aid, has different standards. Locally, we can make different decisions. So even if we went 16, maybe we can get 16 feet, two eight-foot lanes. Typically, the minimum is 10-foot lanes, but we are, you mentioned it. We have, some of that are narrower. So that could be a consideration. I don't know if Andrew wants to add to that.
I just want to add that the, the main driver of why we're proposing that one-way segment for that, for those two blocks, is because of that auxiliary lane, that additional lane on MINDOT's side. That's the section that they've told us that they expect the most impact. So that's why, if you look at the sections, you know, in addition to narrowing the street, we're also proposing to move the street slightly further away in anticipation of that work. So a combination of trying to make sure that they have sufficient room, to the mayor's point, to make sure that we're not setting it up so that they have to come back and rework a street that we just reconstructed, and so that we can achieve that twin loops concept with that shared-use facility. This concept is kind of what we feel is the best solution to all those problems.
But I guess we could test it, right? We could build it at 15 and try two-way. And if there's no safety concerns, no accidents, then we could leave it that way as two-way with the limited amount of traffic. We're starting to see some operational issues two, three years down, then we still have that option where we can make it one-way and say, it's just not working. Let's go to one-way.
Yeah, because my thought is, and I can imagine, if you're one of those houses, you know that there's never any traffic, and you're just going to go. And I feel like it's going to be more safe to prepare people to anticipate that there's going to be traffic coming in the other direction than having people illegally go, oh, my driveway's right there. I can just sneak in.
That's a good point. Thanks.
Good. Thanks, Member Regan. All right. Stand by, gentlemen. Thanks for the presentation. This is a public hearing matter. I'm going to now open it up for public testimony. And if you were here at the beginning, or just came in a little bit later, I'll repeat, I think what Director Benarott told you, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony to the city council. You get a yellow warning light when you've got about 30 seconds left, and we can, if we can have you wrap up your comments. Right around the time you see the red light come on, that would be, then we know we're treating everybody about the same in terms of due process. And, and we'll get the information that we need. If you have any written materials you want to leave with the clerk, you can certainly do that. If you have written statements you want to leave with, with us, in lieu of submitting them between now and Wednesday noon, feel free to do that, too. But let's now see if anybody in, anyone in the audience wishes to come forward and testify regarding this proposed project. Yes, sir. Yeah, welcome. Give us your name and address, please.
My name's Sean Godfrey. I live at 4500 West 64th Street, Edina here, with my wife and two small children. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I stand before you to advocate for a critical change in the proposed Concord B.C. road construction. A change that is not only about convenience, but more importantly, about the safety and well-being of our residents. I'm urging the council to relocate the proposed sidewalk from the north side of West 64th Street to the south side due to significant safety concerns. As a member of this community, I take great pride in our city's beauty, functionality, and most importantly, its safety. However, the proposed current placement of the sidewalk on the north side of West 64th Street poses a safety risk, creating eight conflict points with roads and driveway crossings that would compromise the well-being of pedestrians, cyclists, and motorists alike. The safety of our residents should be a top priority. And the current proposal is far from ideal. By moving the sidewalk to the south side of West 64th Street, we can eliminate these conflict points and have one continuous sidewalk from Concord Avenue to the Walking Bridge. This will create a safer environment for everyone who uses it. I understand that any changes to infrastructure requires careful consideration, but our commitment to safety of Edina residents can't be compromised. I urge the council to conduct a thorough evaluation of the proposed relocation, taking into account the other concerns raised and benefits it would bring to our community. I appreciate your time and consideration on this matter. I look forward to safer West 64th Street and the city of Edina.
Thank you, John. You must have been a person that testified at the legislature from time to time. You got it done in 60 seconds, and that's about all they give you there.
Hi, my name is James Weston. Let's see, my residence at 4501 Garrison, so over on the corner of Garrison and Wooddale or Nancy Lane. And I do have some concerns about the width of the, the future proposed Nancy Lane in between Garrison and where the cul-de-sac is on Nancy Lane. So the proposed road would be that it would only be 15 feet wide, but it has to be a two-way road because it's, because it's going to a cul-de-sac. So you can't really not have it be a two-way road. But 15 feet wide for a two-way road would be the skinniest road in Edina. And having 15 feet, you can't really pass another car with 15 feet. And so I guess my proposed change to the design would be, instead of having a six-foot sidewalk, to perhaps take the existing road and put markings on the road that say, you know, this is the section for pedestrians. But then at least there won't be the conflict when there's two vehicles that they need to pass each other, that one would have to back up all the way down to the end of the block and turn around in order to pass another vehicle. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for that thought.
Hi, council. My name is Dave Meander. I live at 4443 Garrison Lane, similar area as Mr. Weston. And I just have a few thoughts kind of on that same area that he's talking to. Number one, this section of Wooddale that goes between Nancy and Garrison, sidewalks were never a part of the master plan, as far as I can tell. So this is in addition to what was already outlined. Number two, I think one of the main concerns of this area is it only services four houses. There's very little traffic. But what we do see is bikes coming down this Wooddale Hill going south at a very fast speed. That tends to be the problem with pedestrians and bikes. I think what James outlined would be a good solution to that. Number three, further down the path on the south, that goes between the two lakes, it is already a mixed-use area. So the, at some point, we have to differentiate between pedestrians, bikes, as they share the same area. Number four, there's a bunch of trees that we'll have to take out. That never is a good option for us. And lastly, I own the east side of this area. It's about 400 feet or so. And I would not be excited about having to maintain 400 feet of sidewalk in the winter. If, if, if this does go through, I would ask that the city continue to maintain the, the path and do plowing in the winter as it's already doing the adjacent property as well. Thank you for your time.
Yes. Thanks, Dave.
Hello, Janie Weston, 6136 Brookview. I don't live in this neighborhood, but my son James just spoke, does. And so I drive to, park, and walk and bike through the same neighborhood that's going to have the road improvements done. My pickup truck, which is not quite as big as the newer ones, I measured it this afternoon. The distance from mirror to mirror, the outside of each mirror, is eight feet, two inches. And I wouldn't be able to meet another pickup truck like mine on the same stretch between the corner of Garrison and Wooddale going south to the cul-de-sac at Nancy if it were done as a 15-foot-wide street. So what, what I think would be an excellent solution is something that the city already did for a very short block just a few years ago, when 62nd Street and Brookview, where they intersect. There's a short half-block length of Brookview. It runs between 62nd Street and Valley View Road, and it is a designated bicycle throughway. What the city did, instead of having raised sidewalk that was designated as where bicycles would go, but to make it a clearly different pathway for the bicycles, is there is a five-foot-wide, the curb comes down, and then it's five feet wide of concrete on both sides of that short block with the asphalt for, obviously, where the vehicles go. And it has a very clear bicycle marking on it. This is something that would work really well for that very short half-block. You could have 15 feet of the asphalt, then have six feet of concrete at the same level as the asphalt, and then the curb. That would designate and have it clearly marked bicycle, pedestrian, however you want to clearly mark it. But that way, it would be plowable in the wintertime. It's a clear path for future bicycles and pedestrians that are going to be at a higher number once the bridge is done. And then the neighbor that has 400 feet, he doesn't have to keep it cleared in the wintertime. The plows can just give it the swipe. And it can also have, you know, the road treatment done for pedestrian safety. That would be a better way to do that, just that one short section.
Would you give us those, that section again, 62nd Street?
It's Brookview Avenue between 62nd Street and Valley View Road.
Okay. Okay.
It's only that one section.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I just pasted off this afternoon. It's five feet wide of concrete, clearly designating it as, this is something different, and it's on both sides of the street.
Okay.
So go check it out. It, you know, I've been driving that and I still feel like, I probably shouldn't drive on the concrete. And if there's not another vehicle coming, I, I stay on the asphalt. I don't go on the concrete. But it's an option, in this case on Wooddale, for that short stretch, that if two cars, two wider pickups like mine have to pass each other, they can do it.
Okay.
So it's a way to deal with it.
Thanks for that thought.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Hovland and council. Thank you for your service. First, I'd like to reiterate some, my name is Sharon Hammond and I'm at 4,420 Garrison Lane, so I'm right in the...
Would you stand a little closer to the microphone, please?
Sure. I'm right at 4,420 Garrison Lane, which is in the cul-de-sac, so right of the Concord B section.
And would you restate your name for the record, too, please?
Sharon Hammond.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So I'd like to reiterate some of the comments from the other residents here this evening to prioritize the safety of the pedestrians and the bicycles. From being a resident there for many years, I certainly have seen heavily, heavy traffic of pedestrians and cyclists. So number one, you know, just to reinforce that, and that's certainly a priority for us in our community in terms of the, you know, the vulnerable population. Second of all, since I'm living in that cul-de-sac, I just wanted to make a statement that we were talking about reducing the roadways there. And the cul-de-sac, I would just propose and, you know, ask to be stated that I'd like the cul-de-sac to maintain the same size. I know we were talking about Garrison Lane would shrink, I think, by three feet, but I wasn't sure about the size of the actual cul-de-sac, if that's going to maintain exactly the same or be reduced. And my comment to that is that, you know, I, I've, I'm working from home quite a bit. Quite often, I see trucks turning around in that cul-de-sac very frequently. Every Tuesday for garbage day, there's lots of trucks. I know that's a separate conversation, but just noting that there's just a lot of vehicles that come down that cul-de-sac and they're turning around in that cul-de-sac. So just that size of the, the cul-de-sac maintaining that. And then third of all, I'd just like to note that construction, whether it be road construction or housing construction, is a major source of waste in our community. And so just reinforcing the recyclability of the vendors that you're choosing and enforcing how, what types of products that we're using to put down on our roads. I happen to work for Cargill and certainly could put you in contact. We have products at Cargill that we make for, for road, you know, asphalt that is recyclable and renewable and reusable. I know Mr. Pierce, of course, has contacts there as well. So I just want to bring that to your attention, that that is another concern, where there's a lot of waste in the community because of construction. And so thinking about how we are, you know, what kind of products we're putting down on the road and what we're using and all that concrete waste, where is that going to go, for example? So just wanted to reinforce that. And that's also kind of in line with the conversations that we've heard already this evening about which projects we're going to do first, are we going to do the bridge and then do the road and then have to redo it again? And my opinion on that is that it's not only about the cost of that, but also having to redo a road that was just done. Even if we're not paying for it as a city, it still seems to be inexcusable from an environmental standpoint. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for those thoughts. Anyone else in the audience wish to give us their thoughts and comments? Good evening as well. Thanks for being here.
Hi, thank you. My name is Brian Page. I'm a resident of Edina, but I'm here speaking on behalf of my mother, Betty Page. She's lived at 4,504 West 64th Street since 1968. And we're concerned about the parking on West 64th primarily. We're going from both sides parking to, to no parking, which creates a bit of a hardship for people who have deliveries or snow and lawn service, contractors, and especially for guests. And there isn't a whole lot of adjacent parking either. Rose Court is a cul-de-sac with mostly driveways, not a whole lot of places to park. There's a little bit of parking on Miller's Lane, but it would impose additional costs for, for any sort of work to be done. You know, bringing in contractors or whatnot would have to, to, you know, park on St. John's, perhaps, and move materials a greater distance. The road, the shared use path as proposed is wider than the path on Wooddale, north of the, the walkway path. On Wooddale, north of the walkway path, there's a proposal for a share row, where the, the bikes would share the road with, with the cars. The, the traffic in that section of West 64th is, is very, very light. There aren't that many houses served. But, so I would propose a, a share row similar to on, on Wooddale, so that bikes and cars to share that road, and then narrow the path from eight feet to six feet, if, if a path indeed had to be instituted, and preserve parking on at least one side of the street, preferably the, the south side, where it's not interrupted by driveways.
Oh, okay. Good thought. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's go to any folks that might be listening online and wish to testify?
We have a caller. Operator, will you please unmute the line of our first caller? And caller, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Okay. And for anybody else that's listening online, if, the phone number was just up there, so I hope you were able to grab it. So caller, welcome.
Hi, my name is Lana Peterson. I live at 4,500 Garrison Lane. And my comment is that I don't feel like this design centers our voices. I see the engineering survey in there, and I see the need for more sidewalks, but we shared a lot of data through a survey prior to this, and we talked a lot about our safety and transportation needs, and I don't see those addressed. I am an avid walker and I'm a gardener, so I'm always out in my front yard. And there are just places where I am often wanting people to slow down or feeling like I might get hit, or seeing a lot of pedestrians and people in really unsafe places. I call St. John's the superhighway because people are speeding so fast. I've written in before, and I know many of my neighbors have too, about possibly getting a stop sign on Wooddale and Garrison, as well as St. John's and Garrison. And then also the elbow on Ashcroft, there's no safe way to walk because it's kind of a blind intersection either way. When I do walk, my very crazy dogs, and I apologize, neighbors, I take 64th and Concord because nobody is ever there. And so I feel like this design has this imagined future versus focusing on the issues of now. And I will disagree with the previous comment that there's not a lot of road traffic on Wooddale and Garrison. There's a lot, especially because we're just south of a big business district, and then we have so many cul-de-sacs that people are often turning around or getting deliveries and things like that. So it is quite a busy intersection as well. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Peterson.
I have no other thoughts.
All right. Anyone else? We're not going to take a repeat testimony, but is anybody we missed that wishes to give us their thoughts or share their thoughts? All right, let's go to the proposed motion, which would close the public hearing a couple of days from now at noon on December 13th. And then we would continue the matter to the December 19 city council meeting for action. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Pierce moves to close the public hearing on this matter at noon on December 13th. Member Jackson seconds. And we will continue the matter to action on the December, at the December 19 city council meeting next week. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. All right, let's move on to the next public hearing matter, which is Southdale B Neighborhood, proposed roadway reconstruction project for that particular neighborhood. Again, Mr. Gurk has the opening comments.
I'm back. I'll give it a minute here, just for those who are leaving. And it's us.
You stood up and you cleared the room.
Yeah. I've heard that before. All right. Mayor, council members, residents are listening online. My name again is Charlie Gurk. I'm a project engineer with the city of Edina. I'm going to walk us through the Southdale B Neighborhood roadway reconstruction project. Looking at the project details for Southdale B, the neighborhood is just east of Southdale Fairview Hospital, just north of Southdale Mall. The Colony of Edina is probably the largest property in the area, if you're familiar with them. Project is bounded on the south by 66th Street, bounded on the north by 62, Highway 62, and includes 65th Street, partially Berry Road, and Heritage Drive. There's 326 property owners. A little bit different for this project comparative to previous projects in the past is, while there's only 326 property owners, there is a considerable higher number of REUs, and we'll get into that in a little bit. It's about .8 miles worth of road and 11,500 square feet of pavement. The roads were built in the 1960s, originally constructed out of concrete. That concrete exists to this date. If you've driven through the neighborhood, doesn't meet any of our standards from the time, doesn't meet any of our current standards. The pavement is in poor disarray. Condition's not, not good. Looking at the existing street whist, the streets range between 24 and 44 feet. We have somewhat poor condition for soils with silty sand and clay-sand soils. The right-of-way for the area through the colony on Berry Road is a little bit narrower. It's at 50 feet as opposed to 60 or 66 feet. Continuing to talk about the roadway conditions, earlier in the night, we talked about the PCI. Citywide, we're at 78. Southdale B is at 39. The roads kind of just recently broke through that failure condition, which is why we're here tonight. Looking at some of the existing traffic conditions, I mentioned a little bit earlier that Southdale feels busy, but there's some not-busy areas. Berry Road has an average ADT of about 1,300 vehicles a day, which for a normal street in a normal neighborhood would be a lot, but for the density of this area, it's not that high. I just wanted to point that out as we move through our conversation here. We're going to move right into the proposed improvements. We're looking at adding five-foot concrete walks on Berry Road. We'll get into detail there in a minute. We're looking at adding walks onto 65th Street, and we're going to fill a short little gap on Heritage. If we look at the image on the far right here, that's the comprehensive pet and bike plan. It does show that these walks are proposed. Looking at the proposed, proposed roadway improvements, we are going to be ripping out the existing roadway section and replacing it in whole. Looking at the green on this image here, this is 65th Street. We're proposing to reconstruct a small segment of 65th Street to help align some of our pedestrian goals. We're going to propose sidewalks on both the north and south side of 65th Street. The north side ties into an existing walk that goes all the way to France Avenue. The south side ties into an existing walk that was put in recently by the developer at 6,500. We will be narrowing this road quite significantly. We're going to be going from 45 feet in width on the roadway down to 27 feet, which is our proposed living streets policy for a higher ADT road. Looking at a short segment of Berry Road from 65th Street to 66, again, we'll be narrowing the road up. This is primarily a commercial use. There's no street parking. There is currently street parking, but it's very rarely utilized. We will be removing parking on this segment. We will be narrowing the road, but we will be continuing walk. There's an existing walk on the east side, and again, at 6,500, the developer did put in walk on the west side. We will continue that walk south all the way to 66th Street. Moving north on Berry Road from 65th to Heritage, which is through the colony and the tower, we see that we are not narrowing the road up nearly as much. The corridor actually will be a little bit wider because of a proposed sidewalk on the east side. We will be eliminate, eliminating parking from the west side of the road. As we look at the elimination of that parking, based on the surveys to the neighborhood and some traffic counts that we did, we've noticed that quite a bit of the parking actually on the road is either for the, the Met Council bus stop that's there, or for staff at Fairview Hospital that are not parking in their parking ramp. They're parking on Berry Road. So we feel that eliminated parking on one side of the road won't affect those adjacent neighbors. Looking at the section for Heritage Drive, again, we're going to be narrowing the road up slightly from 30 feet to 27 feet. Heritage Drive has an existing walk on the north side with a small gap missing as you near Berry Road. We'll fill that gap in and continue that corridor. There's some miscellaneous sidewalk on Heritage Drive on the east side as you approach 106th Avenue. It looks like it's primarily for those, those three residential property buildings, and it's for those properties to unload and load. Looking at the proposed project cost, at the roadway cost, we're looking at approximately $1 million that will be part of the special assessments. There is another $110,000 or so that's proposed for special assessments for lighting in that corridor. The lighting in that neighborhood is the oldest city-owned street lighting in the city. It was installed when the colony was built in the 1960s. It's in dire need of replacement, and as we change the corridor, we'll have to put new lighting in.
What kind of lighting are you suggesting?
I'll let Chad answer that.
Thank you, mayor. It's pretty much a one-for-one replacement with Cobra heads, like you'd see in that district at the current locations. That's basically our lighting thing that we reviewed with you in the last year, is not owning and maintaining decorative lighting. So it would be Cobra heads at the same locations that the lights are today. And they're Cobra heads today, I believe.
Boy, it's just a beautiful neighborhood for the acorn-style lighting, I think. Cobra lighting is about as commercial as you're going to get. Anyway.
Moving on to the additional roadway costs, so approximately $1.1 million of this project will be funded by special assessments for the roadway and lighting costs. About $800,000 that will be covered by the property taxes. Again, that 37% or so, with a total roadway cost of approximately $1.9 million. We have about $3 million in utilities proposed. Storm sewer in this area does have some dire need for improvement. It's a little bit higher than you would see traditionally, but we think we can make those improvements with some additional spending. Sidewalk totals, about $230,000 will be paid for out of the PACS fund. Project total, approximately 1.5.15 million dollars. That project total does include the engineering, clerical, and finance costs, and is a contingency in there. This is where things get a little different than the typical street reconstruction project. We have a large amount of properties that are condos or apartments. So we've talked earlier about that one REU or one single-family home. Well, there's not a single, single-family home in here. So where our assessment policy was built, it wasn't really built for these types of neighborhoods to make it an easy conversation. What makes it easy is the Colony of Edina. They are all individually owned. They'll all get a .5 assessment or .5 REU. There's some additional mixed-use, or not mixed-use, multi-family housing. We have the Tower of Edina. You look here, you'll notice they're getting approximately 95 REUs of assessment. There's the housing and senior living off of Heritage. Again, each of those properties will have their own unique assessment. And then same with the other properties on the south end here, they will have their own unique assessment. With all that in mind, looking at the total assessable cost of around $1.1 million and dividing that through with the REUs, we come out to about $1,900 per REU or $950 per condo. And that $950 is the $95 for street lighting.
Have you discussed this with the residents over there at the Colony, as to what kind of street lighting they'd prefer?
We have not had a street lighting specific conversation yet. We are hoping to, this winter, have a conversation with the residents directly at the Colony, because it is a big association. They recently changed property management companies, so getting that arranged earlier proved to be painful. But we can have that conversation if council wants us to and directs us to. All right, so we did have a market...
Do we know what the incremental cost... Do we know what the incremental cost would be? Director Milner?
We could have that for you next week.
For the acorn-style lighting versus-
If you wanted decorative, but again, that goes against the policy that this council approved earlier this year about getting rid of decorative except for 50th and France and the Grandview District because we can't afford to keep the lights on. So that was the previous discussions we've had. So if we do them here, then we're going against the policy we just said about six months ago with the franchise fee conversation.
Okay, well, let us know the cost anyway.
We did conduct a market benefit estimate for this property, for this project area. The estimate came out to about $1,200 to $1,800 per apartment unit and $1,500 to $2,000 per condo unit. We, again, that's well above our proposed assessment, $950 per apartment or condo. There are the individual estimates for the individual commercial properties and multi-family and senior living properties. All those properties were within our assessment, our estimate range for their assessment. Prior to our assessment change policy in 2021, this would have been about a $1,500 assessment. We don't have a lot to compare to previously for street reconstruction projects. We haven't done a lot of these multi-family neighborhoods. The last one we did was Park Lawn Avenue in 2016. Park Lawn's a state aid route. State aid assessment policy is 20%, as opposed to where we're at with the 63.12% right now. So we're comparing $950 to about $284 then. If you adjust that for inflation, it's $363 and $2024. And then if you try and amateurize that with our current assessment policy and don't make it a special assessment for a state aid route, that would be about an $1,100 assessment. So it's pretty comparable to what we've done in the past. The REUs per square yard of paving are pretty comparable. There's not a major difference here. So moving forward, again, a reminder, approving the pedestrian and bicycle improvements only requires three out of the five council votes to pass. Staff believes that this project is feasible, cost-effective, and necessary to improve the public infrastructure. We recommend a motion to close the public hearing at noon on December 13th and to continue the action to the December 19 city council meeting. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Questions from councilmembers at this point in time? For either Mr. Gurk or Director Milner? Okay. I've got a question for you on 65th Street. You, I mean, you want to take that from, what is, what is it, 35 feet to, or 45 feet to 27 feet?
We'll be taking it from 45 feet to 27 feet. It's a very wide section for a very low traffic road. It was built, in my opinion, it was built for a different time with different ideas of what was going to be developed east of the hospital. It's a very wide corridor. What we do see, though, is some pedestrian use on both the north and south side of the road, warranting adding of the sidewalks and narrowing the corridor.
And when you look west by the hospital, the street there is about 30 feet wide. So it clearly works at a much narrower width than this one has with much less traffic than what's by the hospital.
I'm just wondering why east of the hospital on 65th, people aren't parking there, but they're choosing to park up on Berry Road.
It's labeled no parking, that's why.
Well, it explains it.
Yeah, no parking.
Although there are parts of Berry Road labeled no parking that receive parking.
The reason you get a little bit anxious about it is because it's, you know, Member Jackson and I were over there for the, the body, GI body dedication of that new building. And you think that whole medical campus, everything in there is medical except for the Colony and the apartments that are nearby. And they generate, that generates a lot of traffic, you'd think, in and out, and you'd worry about giving up some of the on-street parking that might be possible. But you've, I guess you've calculated for that by leaving the ability to park on Berry Road.
We are leaving some parking on Berry Road. This is a very short segment, too. I don't think we, with the curb cuts on the south side, we probably wouldn't add many parking spots if it were allowed to be parked. There would be some parking on the north side, but once you get past the red line on the north side, then you're getting to the power plant and the cooling station over at Fairview Hospital, and there's no parking there because of the curb cuts as well. I don't think that we're impacting traffic flow or we're reducing parking. The commercial buildings and the medical buildings in that neighborhood, they're designed to have parking to begin with, right? I think that part of the crux in that neighborhood is the facilities charged for parking. And so you see a little bit of people parking on the street to avoid that $6 to $10 a day for parking.
Member Agnew.
So I am looking here, and I see that we have the cutout for West 64th Street. Why are we skipping that one? Just kind of mentally thinking through it, leaving that for future work that we're doing potentially on Xerxes or?
Yeah, so York Avenue and West 64th Street were developed at a different time. Prior to this neighborhood being placed in the CIP for street reconstruction, York Avenue and 64th were actually maintained by Public Works. We did a mill and overlay in those neighborhoods, or in those streets. The asphalt to begin with, the non-concrete streets, they were developed at a later time.
You don't need me.
Andrew's the keeper of the spreadsheet for when streets have been worked on, so.
Okay, all right. Member Jackson.
Yeah, could I see the map of the pedestrian plan for this area one more time, please? Went through that kind of quickly. So the dotted line, the red dotted line, was stuff that we're looking to add that the plan anticipated. I'm just trying to think, you know, what the walking is going to be like because it's very difficult now in this sort of nice residential neighborhood, but the street's curves and it's, it's a little scary to walk.
Good question. So I think in general with what we're proposing with mostly boulevard-style sidewalks, it's going to be a significant improvement over what is in the neighborhood right now. I want to add something that I don't think was mentioned as much, but this neighborhood also has a significant amount of transit service that serves it compared to Concord and many other neighborhoods in Edina. So we really want to support that by providing more walking connections to those bus stops. This neighborhood is also like less than a quarter of a mile away from a proposed E-line station at 65th Street near the hospital. So we believe adding those sidewalks on Berry on 65th will really help to encourage use of that station once it's constructed in 2025.
Okay, terrific. That, that answers my question. I guess, looking, I see 66th Street. Is there any discussion with Hennepin County about extending that boulevard that, or the shared path in Richfield into Edina? Is there? That's, I know that's different discussion, but did you ever hear anything about that?
Well, there was that previous approval by council for that fiber optic building and property at the intersection. We required a wide sidewalk to go around their building, so now that's through that property. When opportunities open up to the west, we'll continue those discussions. That wouldn't be with Hennepin County, it would be, Hennepin County would be part of any kind of crossing of Xerxes, but we still need to make connections up to that cul-de-sac of York on the south side.
Is 66th Street a Edina street, or is it a county road?
It's a county facility.
That's what I was referencing, because if you, as you go west or east on 66th, it gets really fancy in Richfield. But we're going to go up through the-
Yeah, I thought you were talking about 65th and 64th connection because there's a park on 64th you had referenced in previous discussions, so my mind went to that.
Yes.
Yeah, the county did a huge improvement project with bike lanes and off-street facilities and all the different stuff, and they ended at the Xerxes.
Okay.
So that'll be a future project if they want to continue that to Edina.
Okay, but this will feed nicely into what's there now and what could be there in the future.
Dual sidewalks on both sides for those southern two segments of streets, and then finishing all the gaps on the other streets. So there is at least one continuous facility through the entire neighborhood.
Terrific. Thank you.
Prompt anything from any other councilmember at this point in time? Okay, thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing matter. I'm going to now open up to the public the opportunity to testify regarding the proposed adoption of Resolution 2023-98, which is the Southdale B Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Improvement embodied in BA 464. Anyone in the audience wish to come forward and testify regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward and hearing nothing, let's move to the virtual world and see if we have anyone that wishes to testify.
It's just me and the operator over here, too. Since the public hearing just started and there is a delay in the broadcast, I think we should may, have another long minute, give people time to call in. My clock shows that it's 8 o'clock, so I'll come back to you when I have a caller or 8:01, whichever's first.
Yes, Councilmember Pierce is going to fill the void here.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I could have made this comment with the last one as well, but I, the comments from the residents, I thought were excellent comments. And it just made me think about the fact that we could actually go through a great project, right? Put in the sidewalks, do everything perfectly. And of late, we've not had really recent great history with taking care of the landscaping. And so that has ended up, even though we've got a $12 million project that goes through perfectly, and then we end up with the tail end of addressing some of the landscaping for the residents. And I can think of at least twice that that's been the case recently. So I would just urge us to just be thinking about that as we go through and just thinking about what things we could do. The last time we talked about it, we said maybe we need better contractors or what have you. And so let's really be thinking about that as we go forward so that we can finish strong as well.
Good. Thanks for that thought.
Mayor Hublin, I do have a caller, but the caller is not signaling to speak. Caller, as a reminder, if you'd like to provide testimony in this public hearing, I need you to press star one on your telephone keypad. That's the asterisk symbol, then the number one. That will get you in the queue to speak. It's not the pound or hash symbol. It's got to be the star to get into the queue. And there it is. Operator, will you please unmute the line of our caller? And caller, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Go ahead, caller.
Oh, thank you. Hi, this is Kristen Gibbons. I live at 6475 Berry Road. I just want to point out a couple things for you to consider. You know, I understand construction is expensive, and yes, Berry Road needs to be, you know, repaired, but the proposed increase in cost to us is like one-third of our property taxes right now, so that's significant. Most of the people that live, you know, in the Colony are retired or working from home, and we don't use that road every day. The road is primarily used by construction vehicles, metropolitan buses, and, you know, hospital employees, and people bringing their children to the childcare located directly east of the Colony. So it just doesn't seem like the cost is related to our personal use, but, you know, yes, it does need to be repaired and lighting needs to be done. My other comment is I don't understand why they're suggesting changing the parking to the east side when it's all, always been on the west side. And there's more driveways to be impacted on the east side. So, you know, for walkers and people walking to the bus or biking, you know, roller skating, whatever, just seems to me it would make more sense to keep all the parking on the west side. And do we really need sidewalks on both sides? And maybe I misunderstood that, but, you know, I hate to see more trees cut down in our, in our area. And then the last thing I'd like to point out is with, you know, disrupting our landscaping and our irrigation and putting in the sidewalks is also going to increase our association trees significantly. And, you know, I know that's not your concern, but it is ours. So thanks for listening.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Paulson. And you're going to hear, if you keep listening, that those costs are built into the project cost, so those won't be supplemental costs. Director Milner, you want to handle that one? She was worried about irrigation system disruption and some other things.
Yeah, correct, Mayor. That'd be part of the project cost, not an additional cost to each one of those properties. So our contractor would handle those repairs and put it back in the operating condition.
Very good. Okay, anyone else? Director Bennerock?
No, sir.
All right. All right, this is a motion. Staffs requested us to make a similar nature to what we just did on the, on the Concord project. Is there a motion to close the public hearing at noon on December 13th and continue the action to the December 19 city council meeting with respect to the Southdale B Proposed Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Project Embodied Improvement BA 464?
So moved. Second?
Commissioner Jackson moved, Commissioner, Member Jackson moves, Member Agnew seconds the adoption of the motion as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Motion's adopted. We'll keep this matter open for public input until noon on December 13th, which is Wednesday, and then we will take it up for action at the December 13th, or December 19th meeting of the city council. Thank you for that. And then manage your comments. Anything? All right. Mayor and council comments. Anybody have any comments? All right, very good. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. A second?
Member Jackson moves we adjourned, and Member Agnew seconds that motion to adjourn. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjourning the city council meeting of December 11, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. City council meeting of December 11, 2023 is adjourned.